I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Vote say aye. Motion approved. Your motion's approved. We have two separate minutes. Do we need them separate? Since.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January thirty first.
I'll say them out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Steve.
Vote say aye. Motion approved. Communications? Nothing.
Um, well, I, not this past week, but before I did have the E and A, um, budget meeting. I met with Josh beforehand to go kind of line item by line item and through his claims and we were cut down a few things and, um, I do, I voted yes for it in effort to, well, I guess should've said with the caveat that it's gonna be a work in progress to see, cause essentially it's always been budgeted worst case scenario and I was trying to explain to him how that, it, I mean, we just can't keep doing that. We can't keep affording that, you know? So we were looking at what he actually spends and then, you know, looking at his actual equipment needs. Are we going to be more? Are we not? And then trying to dial that into more of a specific budget. But we were able to cut that and then, um, he took his raise down to two and a half percent already before that meeting. So, um, that was approved last Wednesday.
That's the second, that's the second reading?
That's the first reading.
Okay.
But it we are, it was already, so it's set, I guess. It's, cause there was the meeting back in January that we set the budget, the public hearing for it. So that was the public hearing and the approval.
So it's not like this, so we have to have two approvals?
Well, it's, so we already had that first meeting in January that you guys just had.
Okay.
Which I heard about that the raise is getting approved at seven percent, which we're gonna have to make some phone calls and try to nip that in the bud before the next one. Um, I went to ISAC last week, um, much to do about nothing. It was about, a lot about effective lobbying with your legislators and theories about the property tax relief bill that's swirling around that nobody knows anything about. Um, then, a couple just like notes, we all received an email from the former employee, um, in the public health department, just if you guys have questions or concerns or wanna talk to border health members or whatever. I think I'm not just have to forward it. I'll ask her if I can forward it to the border health since they never gave her an exit interview. I think it's important that they know about this. Um, but I think you guys could tell that she was frustrated that she did not get an exit interview with the border health.
Should've been on the vote board, you would've thought, I mean.
Well, I think she just got, nobody responded. Nobody, she emailed the entire board and nobody responded back. I responded to the board, you know, encouraging a closed session exit interview.
But as far as that, as far as that letter, she couldn't send it out to the whole board though, right? Border Health?
Yeah, she could send it to them. I think she was just frustrated that, you know, she didn't hear back.
Has the border health, have they did exit interviews in the past with the boys?
I don't know since, not really since I've been on, but nobody's asked for a while.
I think I didn't, well, we didn't because they were like, oh, when they left.
Yeah. And I know, um, when we talked to Ann that day about the union negotiations, I asked her about this. She said, yeah, we should give her an exit interview. So I told the border health that we should be doing this and then I got, I got a flat no from one of them and then no response from the rest.
The conservation board, we did, when Mr. Anderson left, we did. We, we, we make sure we gave an exit interview.
It would be good. I think it'd be good policy just to have in general, but.
I just get some chance. Ben?
Mm-hmm. Well, even if it's on good terms or bad terms, it's a good, good policy.
Yeah, so just, I just wanted to bring that up.
So you think the border health will start with investigating with this stuff? I think it's their responsibility.
Is it a while?
Oh, yeah, but I think she wanted to tell somebody.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, for some reason I didn't get it. It's those that I did, so I didn't get it to you four.
Didn't we get it none?
Yeah. I'm like, yeah, I got stuck. I didn't get mine till yesterday.
Yeah.
Was your name on it initially?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It didn't go through.
Maybe I got stuck in the corner. He runs us a lot.
Cause I wasn't even looking for it. I couldn't find it.
Yeah. Um, I am officially, I got selected to be an IMWCA board member, uh, last week. So, IMWCA, I work as a content provider.
Okay.
I'm on the board directors now, so that'll be an interesting thing to figure out. Um, maybe, you know, Iowa County can get a special discount, right?
Yeah.
I wish. Um, and then the office email that we got from, I didn't realize you guys got it too, or at least John did.
Yeah, we all did. I'm thinking that everybody got it.
The office, looking, lady looking for an office space in.
Oh, yes, I will get that.
So I can follow up on that if you want and just see what their budget is and, um, I was gonna go look at some of the offices after our meeting today, see if they would work.
But like, we talked about that. It's just what it, I don't think we wanna, if we move people, we gotta move.
No, I think it's, yeah, well, I'll, I'll look it over and then we'll come up with a plan. Um, but I think you're right. If we move, if, they need space now, so if we moved them into maybe Dylan's building temporarily until we can find
Find the other one.
Find the other place we wanna house them, cause I don't think we wanna lease that building out. I think we wanna keep that for our offices.
Yeah.
So, so.
Yeah.
But I think the, one of them I'm thinking of, um, sounds like it'd be the perfect fit, so.
I didn't know they were hearing me out, what they actually do.
I know, like how many people do they see?
Yeah, and we may wanna interview them on that too. I will talk to them and see what their mission is and their purpose and and what, what their operation is. Like Abby and I were talking, are they using the office just as administrative and going out in the field and doing the work? Or are people in the field come to the office?
It'd be nice if they just come in here and do a spiel, what they do.
Yeah, maybe we should ask.
Yeah, I could do that.
It'd be something too that I thought about to ask Barry if he had like a, you know, a small office area in the hospital that, you know, that they'll use.
Or not use it on a regular basis.
What are the departments or whatever do they affiliate with?
I don't know. That, maybe we, if they're providing services in Iowa County, we should find out what they're doing.
Not against it, just what are you doing? Okay.
Yeah, that's everything.
Uh, just John and I went to the Farm Bureau meeting and, uh, well, accepted or? I think so, for the most part.
They're concerned about, you know, taxes.
Yeah.
Raising. They seemed supportive of not cutting services.
Right. That's the feeling I got, but they're, they're concerned about taxes going up. They're satisfied with any fund balances now? For the most part, I think. I mean, they.
Yeah, evidently they did the presentation before we got there.
There, which was fine, but.
So they were finishing that up when we got there, so we didn't really get to hear exactly what y'all said, but they seemed really receptive and we showed them, you know, I explained to them why we keep it in deep fund balance. Uh, and then, uh, we talked about how we, you know, we diligently tried to figure out ways to cut the budget. I mean, we've been doing it for three weeks now. We do it every year, but and then they asked about the, you know, what was in the paper and that on the whole. Things like that, but.
They have new questions, but it wasn't anything.
Right.
Yeah, sure. I have to fight the battle for three years and I get things straightened out and then you guys.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, that was.
Yeah, that's all I had to, so. I got a caller in contact with, I wish I could remember her name. She's gonna call here, Mid American Energy. They wanna do a project in the county.
What project?
Kind of, but not. They wanna put up a, they wanna put up like a hundred foot tower. He's, well, she said twenty-five meters of about a hundred feet. And it, it'll put like a dome, basically, an electronic dome over this area. So it has to do with the flashing lights, so the lights will be off unless it detects or a plane's in the area, then it'll come off. So the blinking lights would be off at night until, until a plane's in the area.
Well, that'd be interesting.
They've got it and a couple other, uh, projects. And they wanna know if we were interested and I said, I am, but get on the agenda, bring it in, so. Yeah, the rest of you guys have questions?
Ms. Sarah, William?
No. Wonder if it's an altitude too, if they have to be below a certain altitude?
They gotta be, they gotta be so low and then the planes have, set a radar out, there's a signal that goes up.
Yeah, there's transponders.
That will make it come on. Give me some like electronic dome thing that goes over the, encompass all the windmills. But we talked about this way back when we, you guys over here, when the windmills were starting, that this was some new technology coming along. I thought that was just gonna be one of the hooks, but they wanna put it in. They think it may by, it may be operational by the end of the year, if everything goes right.
Well, that's a win-win actually.
Yeah.
Well, they gotta, they have to figure out where the light. But it's. Cause I was, well. That's how she's described it.
Yeah, I'll do some research.
But, um, I, I was, I go, she has to put up a tower and I go, are we talking about the size of that mill? She, she goes, no, twenty-five feet. You know, you had a, you know, can you put that in?
Yeah.
Imagine it'd be, like, intersectional located or?
Yeah, I would think it'd be the middle.
Or maybe towards the airport?
Right. But it, uh, I go a hundred feet, that's a great leg.
Yeah.
Now that would be terrible. Yeah, if it gets rid of the blinking lights, should be a win-win.
With that tower and the blinking lights?
Oh, sorry. I told her, she goes, that's how we navigate is where the blinking lights are on. I go, you are the issues. Uh, I think that's all I have.
I think, I think that's it.
Been electric licenses? They're gonna do a work session until we, at the end. I don't like stopping and starting.
No, I don't either. Good? How are you?
Good. Kinda used that nice weather. Yeah, now it's gone. Went, drove back from Bancroft yesterday, that wind out of the west up there, it must've been fifty miles an hour, but the black dirt was just flowing across the highway. It looked like a blizzard almost.
You said you were ready by a little extra salt and adding the winter, so God bless the listening.
Right?
Now we're getting, now we're getting ice storms and so it's all your fault.
No, well.
Thank you.
Does it have the icing in the bowl, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna be mostly north, I think.
Um, morning.
I'm going to St. Charles.
Where?
St. Charles.
Where's that?
By Milo. Not that far. West Strider.
Yeah.
West Strider, yeah.
St. Charles.
It's, uh, by where is it? It's really pretty, actually.
Flown over. I've flown over St. Charles. All right, the first thing we have is, uh, we got a final pay voucher. I'll write down the number, it's on there.
Four eight dash C O forty-eight dash zero ninety-seven.
Yeah, so we sign off on final pay vouchers, so.
Is there a motion to approve the chair to sign?
I'll make the motion for the chair to sign.
It's your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say aye.
All right, well, he's signing now. This is what I was talking about last week. Here's a caller from the road view on V seventy-seven. There are uh, guard rail right there and it, uh, sloughs off a little bit. So I wanted to look into ways to get rid of that guard rail. Now, to follow the DOT standard, you know, like a twelve foot extension on and a white box at the end. That was gonna cost a hundred and thirty-three thousand, so we were trying to figure out ways. Look at all the details and try to figure out ways to make that cheaper. And here's kind of an aerial view. You can see that existing box culvert, the red. So I got them to, to give me a new quote, to just put a twelve foot extension on the box with no label. And that's what that shows right there. So if we were to do a twelve foot extension on each side of the road, we could have our guys come in and shape up the rest. We still might put the guard rail back up, but it would be twelve feet off road. Yeah, I think it, I think it would be an okay idea to put the guard rail. We would look at it when the project's done, but it would be an okay, um, it'd be an okay idea. So essentially what that entails for seventy-five thousand is we would do the traffic. We would do the erosion control. We would do the surveys. We would do the guard rail and the back filling. But to, to put a twelve foot extension on both sides would be seventy-five thousand dollars. So I didn't know if that's something you guys are interested in. You know, if we do this one, there's two more on the I W B in the future that we can do.
Is that because of roads narrowing that we wanna take them out?
Well, this, this particular one, so from the edge of the road, you have about eleven feet over to the edge of the box culvert and there's like a three, four foot drop. So this always sloughs off. The water runs down that hill and stays kind of on the road or on the, the shoulder. And then when it gets to the bottom, because it's a nice long hill, gets to the bottom and it cuts off pretty fast. It's always cutting holes there. Like if you get a, if you get a nice rain, you're gonna have a big, a big rock there. Um, big rock. So this price of seventy-five thousand is, is about twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand more than I would want. And if it was forty-five thousand, I would've just did it. So, I don't know. Is it, is it, this is something that Iowa Bridge and Culver, you know, they, they do this in the wintertime when they're not building bridges. So it's something we wanna, I know you guys have been talking about budgets and everything else. Do we wanna just hold off for now?
This, this being the scheme of your budget, of what you're gonna move around and not do without it, cause you're, you're kinda set on what you get.
Yeah. Well, if I were to do this, um, still looking at, you know, pickups, we do some pickups and, um, you know, who, who knows what the rock budget comes in at, but we did transfer a little bit more to the FM account than what I had, uh, than what I had planned. Could more people wanted FM roads done, so our, our local rock will come in just a little bit, probably below what I have planned. Hopefully, right, ten percent increase from my estimate over that changes.
It sounds like you're talking us off, talking us out of it.
Yeah, it does. That's awesome.
Uh, I'm just, it's, uh, I don't know. I don't know. I just didn't know if you guys were dead set against it or dead set for it or didn't really care. If you don't really care, I'll go back and, um, I'm neutral. Okay.
I don't know your budget as well as you do, what you got going on, so I'd give it to your expertise on that.
How do you fix it when it washes out? Just put dirt back? Basically, just everything.
Or, uh, we use the whole patch machine, so we go with spray rock in it and that, that is all.
Yeah.
Um, no oil and then more and more of that.
It's not, it's not a huge dollar amount, but then again, you can take away from it something else.
It looks like three years to guard rails kind of move up to. Probably could be a hit or yeah, but no, that washing away. We've, we've tried a lot of different things there. And if we do that, you know, I'd like to do that one and then in the future, I W B and also straighten out some of those curves. So we can make that one a raceway in the future.
Stuck up a raceway. Yeah, no, I didn't mean that. So like, if you not do this, can you straighten out the curves sooner then or?
No, the curves that will all come on, uh, that, that would all be through grant money anyway and try to get that.
It's one or the other, though, to see the curve straightened out.
Yeah, no, that one, no. We're still working on the aerials now to, to show the landowners so that we can maybe talk to them about the right of way and then once we do that, I'll get submitted, uh, safety grants.
Have they been receptive so far? Or have you talked at all?
Yeah, ish. Ish. It's a farm and a trust and one person is concerned about safety and the spouse, you know, maybe spouse or grandparent care, maybe they didn't wanna, so we're trying to work with. It wasn't a flat out no, it wasn't a flat out yes, which is, which is what, good.
You're more likely to get a flat out no, so. If you get a flat out no, are we done?
We'll figure it out. Maybe we just get delayed.
Okay. I just know it's been, um, there's been wrecks out there and stuff.
This would be the second curve. This would be the one further to the east. Now, I, I consider that first one.
In town, kinda?
The first one coming right out of town, two miles out of town, but I consider that one to be the worst one. But we, we would be better off giving money for that second one. At T Avenue. They're more likely to give us money for that one.
What's that?
There's been a, that's our two. Yeah. Unfortunately, years ago.
It's tough. Sure. I drive it every day, home to school. Yeah, it's a. But you went twenty-five, it's taking your son.
Exactly, but.
So, um, all right, I'm gonna go back and I'm, uh, um, I'm gonna look at the numbers and look at everything on that extension then.
Just let us, let us know what you decide.
Yep, you got it. Uh, this week we did have the ice storm and, um, I think everything turned out really well for that. We even actually had a couple people call in and say, uh, everything's great. That's good. Our guys are focusing this week, um, some of them cutting brush under bridges. I have a, I have a, a list of bridges and stuff we need to cut under. They're making a trip over to Hills today to get, uh, wattles and other supplies for summer projects.
All right, what's a wattle?
Yeah.
Uh, erosion control, erosion control. We're gonna follow those rules a little bit better this year. And, um, and so we're also working on permits for that too. And today they're hauling, um, salt and sand, salt, uh, around. All the contract rock stuff is approved by the DOT and sent. Does take a lot more work now that we split up the FM, so just a lot of work focused on. The guys are inputting a lot. They have to, now input all the cross-section of every bridge and every, there's a lot of stuff they gotta do for federal highways. I think it's ridiculous, but they are gonna have two to three weeks of nothing but bridge data input. Um, we also, we did not make the final cut for a bridge grant that the state is gonna submit for, um, the bridge on F fifty-two trail just west of four mile corner. That, that's our one of two most the bridges that we have on our paved road. I submitted that one and, uh, we didn't make the final cut. Yes. They had forty-eight, forty-eight bridges applied, twenty got accepted. They said that they cut out everyone that wasn't a normal bridge, didn't use bridge standards. We did. And they cut out bridges that had six and seven ratings, which ours was a five, so we still fell in. And then they said we had to cut two more, so we changed the scope of the project and cut a few more. Made that cut. That, that was us.
That's what that bridge is, looked like in nineteen thirty, where the river was straightened. So you got a picture of the old bridge in back then?
You can't really see the bridge, but you can see where the roads were totally different.
Which bridge?
That one we talking about, one that he, you can see where the old embankment was. It wasn't, that was before that one even.
Is that what that thing is there by Spencer's house?
Yes.
What's one of that was?
They found the, they found one of the original beams inside of that, when they dug that, when they cleaned that up there.
Yeah.
They found one of the beams, hand, hand honed.
That moved a long ways then.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know.
Okay, all right, right there, yeah. So it was more of a north-south bridge.
Right, right.
Yeah, like in the sixties or seventies, that's when they went through and put all the curves in. I think they reworked this whole, you know.
Yep.
Putting curves everywhere.
Look, we live on that website. That's interesting to see where the roads used to go, where they are now.
And I did send up, uh, bid request for, uh, spring concrete patching, so. I talked to the people, Abby, I talked to the people on the hundred idiot to get to that cemetery today. He said he'd sign up on it.
I don't know. Put me up here and ask him.
Well, I said to you, you have the sign up sheet.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm under a rush.
Okay.
So.
I'll make sure, yeah. Okay.
I told Abby.
You put that on there.
I, yeah, I talked to him about it. He's like, well, all right. And I said, well, you should be getting a piece of paper from.
Okay. Okay. Probably saw it last week. Pretty hard this week.
Just a reminder to you guys, on February twenty-fifth, that's our safety action plan meeting in the morning, so you guys all have to be to that.
What time is it?
I believe it's in the, you have an email.
Eight-thirty on the twenty-fifth.
I think it goes till noon and then there's something maybe that goes, maybe it goes to eleven and then from like one to three.
We're here all day? Well, yeah.
No, I, the general public goes in the morning and then, I'm not sure what the effort.
This is.
I believe so. I don't know if I ever had.
We did.
You might not have, I probably sent it.
I thought we just got it.
That's like the whole email.
I know.
And then, uh, I'll need somebody to stop by for rock bids on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, three P M.
We can burn that one, Nick. I'll resend it.
Yeah.
What time? Three P M on the twenty-sixth. I just need somebody to stop by. You guys got a different email that wasn't from me?
Yeah, from David Giedt Coman from Kinley Horn.
Am I on that?
What day was that, Carl?
You said the twenty. I need somebody to stop by at three P M to open up rock bids.
Chris and I are out.
When?
The twenty-seventh. That way I can have it all nice and presented to you on the twenty.
Easy, Kyle.
Yeah.
The twenty-seventh, I should be available.
Probably just.
In the morning?
No, it's at three P M. They're all doing three.
I, I probably could be available.
Or, or you could just tell me, I can just open them up to.
I'll turn to the plan on it and thus.
Yeah, if you can't, just let me know. I probably could.
It's just something that you guys wanted to be there to open, we can start. So that's up to you guys, but. That way we can have everything looking back since then, seeing all the numbers done to present to you on the, the next day. Everything is cleaner when we do that.
We don't even have questions for Nick.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
You guys too.
One thing I forgot in communications was John and I have, are setting up an insurance meeting with Rick Jedlica.
Oh, yeah, I responded last night.
Yeah, I saw that. But, so he, in his email, it was originally, you know, they sent to, sent out was he has the renewal and a couple requested alternate, alternate plans and rates. Are, I mean, we're mid-budget here. I, if we even meet next week and to try to figure that all out and then change the numbers, I, that might be a lot.
Only if it goes up. You can always change that.
Yeah. Um, do you, are you guys wanting us to look into these alternate plans and rates?
Never hurts to look.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we have to change, but.
Yeah, sometimes it might just, oh.
This is something.
Yeah. That was another thing they asked at Farm Bureau, I guess, too, was one of the agents asked if we ever shop around.
That was for, uh, property insurance. There's only like two companies, isn't there?
There's a lot that take, will pick up us for community.
Yeah, and she was, she didn't know. She was just asking.
Yeah, there's, there's not really much out there.
The time there's only two. I thought the last time.
As Ann said, there's only two.
I know, I, I don't, yeah, I'm a little hesitant. I think I know where he's going with some of these things and we've been kinda going down this path for a while. And if we're gonna go to like a high deductible plan, I'm pretty agree about that. A, because if you do the high deductible plan, then you have to have the health savings account, which then that's a huge project to try to run, run through the auditor's office, just set that all up before. That'd be, I'd like to see a little bit more time in the making on that, but. And I don't think we'd have that many employees that would take the HSA, or, yeah, the HSA plus the high deductible. But if he's got other ideas, I mean, but at the end of the day, we need to decide too, are you guys willing, do we wanna raise deductibles on all the employees? To save money, or?
We'd have to see how much we could save. That's when you get something you'd ask. We're running out of things we can cut.
Okay, I just wanna kinda get a general consensus case, we meet Thursday instead of after Friday's board.
We're just on fact finding. We, we make the decision, yeah, the right.
Yeah, yeah, but I need to know what we're.
It'd be nice if we meet Thursday, cause then we can report back Friday.
Yeah, the only thing is I have that, I'm supposed to have the IMWCA training, like an onboarding thing in that day, but I'm hoping to move that back a little bit, but.
Yeah, I, I can meet anytime, so.
When are we gonna open them generating? Nine o'clock?
But they have to be submitted at a certain time.
Yeah.
Have you spent the day before?
Oh, in case anyone like showed up and.
Yeah, I had somebody ask me. My camera, if that says. It's whatever they add says. I think it says nine oh five.
This morning in the advertiser, I can't remember what it said. I thought it said nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock or nine oh five.
I can't remember either, but anyway.
Randy, I assume you all wanna be at the insurance meeting or somebody from your office?
Um, I was looking at Sarah.
Okay, do you think Thursday at eight A M would work?
She'll be back.
Okay, I just emailed them. Ten and ten is tried for Thursday at eight. If that works for you, sorry, I didn't ask. I just assumed.
Yeah, Thursday at eight, up here.
Yeah, let's see if it works for them.
Wanna go to recess for a few minutes?
About, didn't have it just says.
Are we recessing?
Must be, we see an alert at four thirty on thirteen. This will be open on February fourteenth, and then five top editors have a right to review.
So let's see.
Tell them to come at nine?
Yeah.
There. Okay.
Put it first thing on the agenda?
He was just like, I, I mean, he didn't care, he just wanted to know when we're open. So he could raise it if he would like to.
Anything else?
Don't break it though.
Okay, so as you know, the hospital is interested in hiring two deputies to perform security at the hospital. So I, we've been working on a contract here for the last two or three months. So what I sent you, there was one thing that, from what you guys got that was changed, there was still. You know, this was at one time in the whole city, well, there was one city that got left behind, and that got removed, so. Outside of that, the contract that was in your email is the same that we have. Uh, so it's just up to you guys now. Um, I, I approve the contract, uh, the hospital approves of the contract, so. It's just up to you guys now. What they want is full-time too, and they're willing to pay costs, so it's no cost to the taxpayer. There is, um, benefit to the taxpayer and that we just haven't worked out. One of the first things that Barry mentioned when we talked about this is that, you know, when things, on a really bad day in Isle County, if those guys have to go and do something else, they'd be sold for that. So, there is some, some advantage to us. Um, it's not as expensive as putting a, a deputy in a town because we don't have, we don't need another car. We don't need to budget for fuel. We're gonna take one of the spares and just put it up there, and if they ever need it, they can use it if someone else needs it. It's, it's not, it's not another vehicle, so that's awesome.
Look like a deterrent, it also looks like a deterrent.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
It, it'll always be. That's great. And the way the, the way the schedules work right now, and you know, the, the contract is always open that if they wanna change the schedule, we can, but there is a twelve-hour schedule that we do right now that actually lends itself perfectly to this, cause it gives them seven days' coverage. Just one person working every day, and, um, it fits into the, to the scheme that we're using now.
And they're willing to pick up all the costs, it's gonna constantly calculate the benefits and everything?
Everything.
For two officers?
For two officers. Yeah, um.
So, I, I think you and I talked about this, and I think I'll answer it just to be sure. So let's say that you take two off of our existing employees, right? We don't hire two new, cause if hiring two new, they can obviously see all the costs that are referred. Whereas if they take two of our own and then we have to rehire, and then have training or whatever, but that will all be sorted out.
Yeah, so what, what I would do, because it, this is an assignment, and so it's very much like the, the North English and Victor, we don't. In those cases, we don't have a specific person that's on that assignment, but we take a general deputy who doesn't have rank, but has family coverage and that, and that's what we use as the basis, which is, is actually two people. I actually take two people. I would do the same thing here, so we would be hiring two, but it's, they're gonna pay for the coverage of the, the family. It, it would be just the same model that we use for the cities.
Okay, yeah, which is more than what the new person coming out would be.
Right, and, and the thing is with the way the contract reads with the steps, if you hire someone with experience, it's, they get more, but then you don't have the ILA costs, but if you actually run the numbers, they're almost identical. So it doesn't really make a lot of difference either.
That's what I thought, yeah. I just wanted to confirm it.
Yeah, cause ILA costs, you know, is probably runs, oh shoot, the fuel and everything, you know, between twenty and thirty thousand dollars now. We haven't sent someone for a while, so, but it's, it's running, so. Cause you're paying them while they're there and they're not offering you anything while they're there, they're just training, so.
So the two new people just be there, or we just?
So, no.
People rotating.
No, what, what, what my plan would be is to offer it to existing. I have one deputy right now that's interested. So as it stands right now, it'd be a combination of someone new coming in and one of our current deputies. And so it's, it, it, it's gonna be one of each right now. Now, somebody within the next few days, cause I told them, I need to, if you wanna do this, you need to tell me now, so. You know, made that notice to the deputies. It's now or never.
I just didn't know it would be a rotation. This is your day to be over there.
No, because if we, if we do that, then it might affect their rotation as well, like someone going on vacation and patrol sometimes adjusts other people's schedules, and so it, to try to maintain that in conjunction with the regular patrol schedule, would just be causing hiccups that we don't need.
Well, that, you met, you just brought it up, that might be an issue with vacations, I think.
They understand it. It's, it's very similar to the situation we had with the man of society when they provided the man of society deputy was that they understand that when they're, when they have a sick day, they have a vacation day and, and all that. That, that's just part of that, and so.
There's always all that kinda joke.
Yeah, there'll be times when they're not at work, and it's no different than any employee they have.
I don't know if you're guaranteed that.
No, it's, it's, they're hiring specific officers, not, they're not paying for hours.
Okay.
Which, if something happens, you got other officers that'll respond, so.
Absolutely, and, and actually, that's the other side is, is that, you know, we go there, not a lot. We go there now, there's, there're quite, there's, it, it stacks up after a while, and cultural service there, that we just can now take off the flight, don't worry about it. That's, that's good.
So eventually, will it be like the same two guys, that'll just be their job?
Yeah.
So, so I think it'd be beneficial if the hospital sees the same people.
Yes, and that was something that the hospital talked about, is they really want them to become part of the hospital community and, and, you know, be one of the, one of the team, and so that's, that's another reason to do it that way, so.
No, I think it's great, I mean.
Yeah.
Is there really any downside?
Well, I mean, anytime you hire or you're taking on more liability, I don't know if that will affect our liability insurance that we're there. I mean, we're, we're gonna go there if there's a problem anyway, so I don't know if it added anything that's not already on our plate, but you just, you just increase the, the, the number of people we're covering by two. Yeah, I, I like the fact that we just don't have a lot of other expenses. It really is just wages and benefits, because we have enough stock to, to make it work, where we're not like going out and buying essential supplies or like, like the vehicles. That would just kill the contract, yeah, really expensive.
Close up uniforms and general equipment, right?
Yeah, and we're buying that stuff all the time. We, we've got closets full, what works for someone is, we take it out of closets, not forget it, it's, it's just the cost of doing business. I, I don't spend a lot of money on uniforms.
Shows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dollar general. Aren't they gonna have like an office there or something?
They're, they are, you know, they're doing an expansion there, so it, it'll change, but they do, they have a place that they're gonna have a desk and. They're, they have a really nice job description, and, and I was coming up with a job description, and Barry had come up with one, and it's, he, he wants them to do exactly the things that I would've said they should be doing.
But they walk the hallways or?
Walk in the hallway, walk in the perimeter. Just the big thing is being that PR that out in the public, helping people, you know, if you see someone struggling getting out of the car, whatever the case is, um, they're just a helping hand as well, because they're not gonna be enforcing the law most of the time. It's really, it's a, it's a deterrent, and it, it helps, cause it's gonna be night shifts. So if somebody has to come and go out of their car at night, they can do escorts.
So, I, so what time, what are the hours gonna be for?
So it, it will mostly be between six and six, but that is open for adjustment. I sent them a copy of the contract, so they understand what's possible, but it looks like it's gonna be very close to six to six.
Adjustment has to be approved by you?
Yeah, but what, the contract reads that we would, we would mutually agree on any, on any changes, but the big thing is that we don't violate the, the union contract.
Do we have any questions on this?
I think it's a great collaboration between public and private entities and will be a good working relationship, and I'm glad that they're sticking with just county, cause that would just be messy, trying to mix with city and.
Yeah, no, it's, it, uh, the agreement that we have, it's, it's very straightforward, very and things that are in there, I, I would expect to see, there's not, there, we're not really stretching our, ourselves to, to accommodate what it is they're looking for.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agreement.
Sir, a second?
Four seconds.
All the papers say hi?
Hi. What's your name?
Motion approved.
Okay, so this is a twenty eighty, so, um, and what it, what it says is instead of putting a price on it and having to redo a twenty eighty, it just refers to a price schedule that I'll prepare. I'm working on one right now. I'll send that out to you so you can see what the billing would be, but it's pretty straightforward.
This is what it does, goes through Tim's hands?
It has gone through Tim's hands, and Tim actually found that extra city in there, which I all missed.
Is there anything I need to sign with any other?
No, no, it's just, I, it's a twenty eighty with the sheriff's office essentially, so, in the county, so I just need an improvement to enter the twenty eighty. And then we'll just update it. I told them we, we would have numbers annually in the month of March, or earlier if it works out, so.
When do they wanna start?
Uh, it would start as soon as we can. What I cannot do is start until we have the extra.
And still, yeah.
Pulling people off throughout the county roads, we don't do that, so. Um, I've already started, cause we can, we can test all the time, so I started that process. The ad for testing goes into the paper next week. Uh, the bylaws of civil service pretty much spell out how long you can have, have to advertise and then test and then hire, so. It's between a forty-five and sixty-day process, and you count the, the hire, potential hire, giving notice to an employer, so. I would think that it would start in the early part of April.
The one that you thought of, this thing about going over that, they have no problem with, uh, I'm not just walking around, I'm willing, I'm willing to help people and do stuff like that.
No, you know, and, and I've talked to him about it. That job is really what, what you make of it, and the more you integrate yourself into, into the operation, I think, the better it will be, and you'll, you, what you don't wanna do is sit at a desk and watch, watch a clock tick, so.
Someone say, well, that wasn't part of my description.
Right, yeah, no, it's, and that was important that we came up with a job description right away, just to make sure there was something that somebody would be interested in. It kinda reminds me of a school resource officer, it's just in a hospital, so that was cool.
Right.
Do you have part-time deputies right now? Do you have part-time deputies right now that are interested in full time?
If they could pass the test.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, that's always the big thing to get them past the test. We find that more and more difficult every time we do this.
Okay.
Well, the physical and the physical is that running around that track that gets them, you know, they have to do it. The young guys have to do it with full fifty-one, which I know all of us can, but.
I got a bad feeling that I can't do it anymore.
A mile in twelve fifty-one? Or is it a half? Oh, no, my, uh, what was it? Man of refrigeries, they put up the paper my time and I'm like, oh, God.
I was just saying.
Kevin, you're out too.
I love everyone.
All right, well, thanks. I'll let I'll let Dr. on.
Thanks.
You have a weekend. Good luck in your rest.
Okay, we got anything for next week's agenda that we don't?
You're gonna be gone, right?
I was gonna ask if that's gonna be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I can be here.
Otherwise, I can drive back and forth.
No, I can be fine.
Oh, for that though? I'd like to go Thursday afternoon, but if I can, I can. Okay, that being said, I'm gonna refer this to Abby since you put this all together. Do you want to go through this?
Yeah, yeah. So Randy sent you guys an email. I sent you guys an email. I think our numbers were pretty much one of the same. Obviously, we're still looking at that eleven and a half percent property tax increase as a whole as it stands right now. So I'm just doing some thinking.
Okay, are we gonna go through this?
Yes. I've been doing some thinking about how can we cut, other than cutting health insurance, you know, across the board cuts, what can we do to reduce our tax ask this year? And, you know, it kind of came down to, you know, we what spurred this was a couple weeks ago, we were looking at Dylan's budget. And we always budget X amount, but we come in way under. And then having the public health director come in and present her actual numbers versus their ask this year. Because if you look at the difference, they're asking for over seven hundred thousand, but in fiscal year twenty-four, they only took four hundred and sixty-four thousand. So, no, I'm not here. I'm not talking about this. This is just general talks. So this is my this is my just general conversation about what led me to this idea. So I'm like, so why is there such a gap? Which departments are over budgeting expenses and under budgeting revenue? Because at the end of the day, the property tax mechanic is our computer system is gonna say this department's generating X revenue, and they need this for expenses. And whatever is in between for most of these departments is property tax revenue, right? So how do we narrow that gap to not ask so much from the taxpayers, right? Be more accurate too at the end of the day. So the first, this is how I came up with this. The first page is just expenses for the county. And it shows you the this is a look at the blue line. The blue line is what we're budgeting this year. The green graphs or green bars are how fiscal year twenty-four ended, which is the last fiscal year we closed out. And then the gray is the average over the last three years. The reason why I included both fiscal year twenty-four and the average is because sometimes, for example, if you look at the sheriff's office, but like, so these two bottom numbers have an ambulance in them. This blue number does not, this blue line. And so that's where I'm like, are we?
Does he get an ambulance every two years?
Every two years usually.
So then he would have a budgeted.
Yeah, there's one. He starts finding.
I thought it was every three, because it's hundred, hundred, buy, hundred, hundred, buy.
So there's never a buy, is there? But then we always budget every year, so.
But you but it's a hundred, he budgets a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, and then he budgets three.
B U Y.
Yeah, B U Y.
I think my like, we're not skipping B.
No. But if you look at it, so on a non.
Put the signs in the pocket.
On a non-ambulance year, so if you look at the the number sheet, not the graph, an ambulance year runs you one point, well, north of a million without raises, obviously. A non-ambulance year runs you from six seventy-four to seven eighteen was, and you got to keep in mind that health insurance increases in here too, but we're gonna have to count for so we can't just be really down to the wire on this. But could we take, and he's asking for one point three, can we take this number, add in what the seven hundred and eighteen thousand, add in some fluff for increase of health insurance, then add in whatever the EKGs are, or whatever he's budgeting there, like, you know, extra stuff on top of that. But is there a way to dial this down even by a hundred, two hundred thousand? Because that helps us at the end of the day.
He dropped one EKG and it's gonna do it the following year. So that is, I think they're eighty thousand piece, I thought he said.
Yay.
So on the taxpayer, so per se, so you have twenty-four, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, and is the difference of what he asked, what he spent, four hundred?
The which the four hundred and eighty-two thousand?
Yeah, what's the?
That's the what he's asking for this year and what we put into it last year or the last fiscal year that would close, which is twenty-four.
Okay, so I don't know if it's at the same time. So the twenty, the he 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 spent seven eighteen or he budgeted seven eighteen?
He spent seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of property tax revenue, essentially.
And the four eighty-two signifies what?
The difference between those two. What we're budgeting today for the.
So that's extra.
What he's asking for today, right?
What he's asking for today is one point two eight million.
So it's the difference between.
Last year's and this year's.
Yeah.
This number.
And what he actually spent last year, what they actually spent, between these two levels.
Yeah.
It ideally would be nice to have fiscal year twenty-five in here too, but I was thinking about how that's all budget in theory right now. And I don't have a way of like extrapolating that out to figure out where it's gonna end. But, I mean, that's also never a metric to look at as we dig more into this. I'm just throwing out an idea here. But then if you look at conservation, it's the same thing. They've lived on two hundred and eighty-three, four hundred nine, three ninety-three, and they're asking five seventy-one. Can we go to five hundred thousand and save seventy-one?
I would say so. That's no problem.
I mean, I'm not, and I don't want to cut these so short that we are in a problem, but you know, seventy-one thousand is a chunk of change on the.
I'd say, I, yeah, I'd say that right now. It's confidence.
See, he doesn't have his budget in yet, though, is he?
It's in, but he took he was took it out, not enough.
So then like, even if you look at ambulances, I'm just gonna throw numbers out, like this is all just figuring. If you take off, we take that one point two eight million and take that down, let's say to in one point one million, let's say that, that's even way more generous than I think we need to be. That's a hundred and eighty-six thousand there that we save. And then if you take public health down to, let's say, five twenty-five, that's almost two hundred thousand there. So.
So every department's different, but I just thought that one. The last year's budget utilized did have fully staffing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I didn't know. I want to make sure that.
Well, except for the one nurse, but we can't really fill it. There's a three-quarter and a part, and it's just hard to find part-time nurse. But that's that's doesn't cost us any more money.
I just didn't know if the difference was we were budgeting for somebody we never began.
I think other than the nurse, it was filled.
Okay, that's what I'm concerned about. Is is everybody fully staffed? Because most most of our expense has always been employees.
Yeah.
What about courthouse?
The courthouse budget, I think we could pare down too. I mean, that's what Dylan's been living off of for, the only thing is if you have a big, major thing, but I still think we could shave off a hundred thousand there.
Well, it's a good thing it's becoming up. Does he have a problem with the? We have a few of the more of these budgeting or something.
And this is just, I mean, we'd have to sit down with department heads and just look it over, bring them in, I think, as a board. But even so, if you do a hundred thousand on the.
Okay, so.
Courthouse, that's five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that we just shaved off the budget. And that takes our property tax ask down by half.
Who's department?
Hundred thousand off of Dylan's.
A hundred thousand takes our property ask down.
So.
No.
If we do seventy-one thousand off of conservation, two hundred thousand off of public health, and a hundred and eighty-six off of ambulance, plus a hundred thousand off of courthouse, that's five hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
What about any adjustments worth a treasure?
That without knowing if it's just interest rate stuff, I should probably check on that. So that could be another savings.
So now our property tax ask would be down around six percent, where you're told.
Yeah.
Just one little bit.
What to do with two and a half percent raises and keeping budget and keeping insurance rates the same?
Right, right.
And I think this, I mean, I've noticed this trend. Every year that we budget, this is what happens. So we budget one year and we say, we're gonna aim for, used to be twenty-five percent last year was eighteen percent. And then we get to come into the Farm Bureau meeting, which is the only time that I realistically look into where ending from balance is looking like, you know, then I start looking into this in January. And it's always way higher. Like, how did this happen? And it's because of situations like these where we're just, and I get it, you want to budget worst-case scenario, but I think we're past those times that we can keep doing that. And I think we're gonna have to be a little bit more.
So the two would get to. Yeah, let's just stay tuned. It starts creating revenues for counties and cities, but that's, doesn't sound like that's what the talk is up there, so.
Now, what about, I know transportation's different, but I mean.
Transportation, so.
That's an in and out.
That's that's another, that's another topic.
I know, no.
I, that's another, that's a good point. I was gonna bring that up too, bringing up their revenue, because they do essentially reimburse us for majority of our expenses and pencil them away. So should we take that hundred forty-nine down to fifty thousand?
Right, that's what I mean.
That's on which one, the revenue?
Transportation.
Transportation, look at the tax ask. They're asking for us to put a hundred fifty thousand in. They're not gonna spend that. They're gonna spend less than fifty, because they get reimbursed, but.
Yeah, I guess talk to her and see, but yeah, that'd make a difference.
You know, there's another hundred thousand or close to that.
Yeah, that's another hundred.
It's just, it's gonna, it's gonna, okay, make a lot of work for us for the twenty-six budget.
Well, it's really not. As I mean, as the only thing is, as long as people aren't, you don't do a bunch of budget amendments and things like that to do this, but.
Yeah, we we need a way to leave a nice cushion since we're gonna do this, in my opinion, for the first year to see how this works.
Yeah, that's why I'm, that's I'm trying to leave quite a bit in there. But I mean.
So do you want, do we want to start meetings like Monday? Or can we meet next week? Because we can get, if you want to meet department heads, this is what we're thinking. Why don't this work? So, yeah, we need, well, department head, remember, thinking about cuts on conservation, public health, ambulance, Dylan, have them.
Transportation.
Transportation. And you're you're gonna meet with the trade.
And these numbers, like, changes that come in, obviously, they come in some.
But now?
When they come in and try to explain things, maybe there'll be.
A reflect that we came in or something.
Reason we can't do that, but it does.
They didn't have a heck of a reason.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You did a great way of showing it with this, because we, like you said, you don't see the like this.
Right.
Budgets and revenues.
I thought we always did the factual, didn't realize that was projected.
Everything's projected, yeah.
I didn't know in accounting you do project it. So anyway, I think we need to do this to get things doing quickly.
I think so too, yeah.
So what's people's availability next week?
I'm available any day next week.
I should be. I got heritage on Tuesday.
In the morning? Tuesday morning would be ideal for me, so I don't have to pay very much money for me.
On Tuesday morning?
Yeah, Tuesday morning.
I have a meeting at twelve thirty Tuesday, but I could, you think we'll be out of here by eleven thirty?
I think so.
But if not, I mean, no offense.
Yeah, I could leave.
Tuesday morning?
Not not trying to say you're not important, I'm just saying.
You're getting shorter, are you?
No, I think I'm all the way down.
I'd sort of chair your brain if I was.
First, just start marking hers.
So maybe Tuesday?
Tuesday nine, does that work?
About three.
That works.
Yeah.
At nine, right?
It's worth a try. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I'm not gonna be heartbroken over it, but.
So we didn't fight all those.
Yeah, I can send email.
You said no, right?
You threw out a little ray of hope.
Oh, I gotta get your link.
You went, Brady, already? Gosh.
It's it's gonna save us one year. Like we said, going forward, we might have to make the hard cuts, but it's gonna save us one more year.
They said it's more than one year.
What?
They said it's more than one year.
Yeah, it could.
If it launches out, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that the Farm Bureau, I mean, that's what he was talking about, that I can't remember the head guy, but remember he said, like, it been, he said that, you know, that's what they're hoping for, that's their goal, is like, keeping the property tax in the in the property tax owner's pocket, not, you know, not in a fluff or, you know, budget. But he understood there's, you need some sort of cushion.
Correct, because we never know, like, when the first is gonna go out or.
Interested in that, but.
I mean, you know, we always like to say nothing's gonna break, but it always does. Most get blown off or.
Yeah, I mean, if the roof blows off, that's for the insurance claim, we're gonna have the.
Like the deductible of five percent of what of the value is.
Yeah.
It's gonna seal the health.
We have, the good thing too is the county's in a really good position bonding-wise with our, all the bonds going offline this year that if for some reason we had to do some a major capital expense, we couldn't take out a bond for it with.
Speaking of which, so then, the jail one was done this year.
Our last payment is. This.
That was in that package that she sent us, wasn't it?
You should have the layers.
I haven't.
Long term. Or that are gonna be coming off?
No more debts coming online. There's more coming off the cameras, the jail, and.
Is there one for ambulance?
So what? No, I don't think, we don't have one for ambulance.
I thought there's maybe one that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Where was that?
Which I didn't.
Debt service levy.
I met with Heidi on at ISAP, and she said that she's gonna keep an eye on interest rates. If they drop even point two percent in the next two, before June, when the bonds are callable, then it will save us money to refinance.
To refinance.
Yeah, so she's gonna keep an eye on the interest rates. And if they drop to where we're gonna save money, she'll let us know.
Say if you don't pay double of that money, is there gonna be? Don't fund budget, or is that true?
No, that's service levy. So it just levies what it needs. Except, Brandy said that that's what that email was about. So I had a note in there to go, like, oh, are we at the right rate on this number?
There, Brandy.
So I wouldn't forget.
Okay, is there any other discussion, I guess, where you've got our dates set up?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We've decided who we're all gonna call in.
Who are asking to come in in two.
Conservation, public health, ambulance, Dylan, and transportation, right?
Yeah.
We need to set up. What time and what.
Yeah.
Well, I I'm thinking, I'm trying to tie this up that they could just fill out the slot, like half-hour slots.
Yeah.
Can I go back to this? So we have. So if we start at nine, you would have nine, nine thirty.
You think we need thirty minutes a person?
Well.
Yeah, I would say it's his case. We can always call someone early. They're like, Dylan, we can call him many times.
Okay.
And then eleven, so nine, nine thirty, ten, ten thirty, and eleven. I don't, do we need to put on the agenda with them coming in, Brandy, or just have budget work session? Yeah.
So you want it to be one?
No, I don't, not them.
Could just ask them to arrive fifteen minutes earlier or ten minutes earlier.
So you're gonna do that? Until I'm bringing the budgets with them. I'm bringing them.
Yeah, some people get scared that we're gonna fire them.
I'm gonna send them a preface of why we're calling them in and like, maybe.
So they can look at.
Yeah, we can let them know.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way.
I don't want people worrying on the weekends, gonna get phone calls.
So is there, there's no way we can save money off of the next budget?
We can give him less money, less property tax revenue, but that just cuts out the local gravel fund essentially.
Yeah, pretty much, it's like a gravel.
That's why I didn't include him in here.
I'm sorry, you said you don't want to gravel roads.
We don't need too much gravel for it.
I do.
Is that the only departments that you sound like?
I think so. The rest of them are, you know. The sheriff's is high because we got raises in there that are higher than the rest of them in the vehicles. The attorney comes in pretty close to what he budgets. Brandy always does. Their quarter always does. I mean, we cut maybe twenty, not even ten thousand from Sherri's, but that doesn't make much sense. I went from bigger ticket items. VA looks pretty normal. The non-departmental, that's gonna ignore that. That's a lot of property tax revenue and stuff, so. Yeah, so.
So who else again? The courthouse?
Transportation, ambulance, public health and conservation. And then I will talk to Michelle about her, her, or do you wanna bring her in?
I don't know what she needs to.
Did you talk about her interest rates? I guess it doesn't make any sense for me to go over and try to figure it out.
Unless, yeah, I guess everybody else is coming.
Yeah.
So what they, we need to give her that slot if she wants to come in.
What?
She wouldn't need thirty minutes.
Probably not.
Just have her see if she can come at nine o'clock right away.
There you go.
Can I just schedule two of them?
I don't think it'll take very long to explain that.
So, I mean, I guess this is my thoughts.
It's a good start.
It's good to help, it's, I mean, hopefully it's the end, that's the start.
Yeah, hopefully it gets us.
Like I said, so what would that even be? If we just, let's say in theory, without fixing anything with the treasurer's office, that takes it to.
Okay, now I found an error on the minutes from the other day. Motion by Meyer, seconded by Montrow.
You got a name change.
It's just, it's just.
Trust me, we call you different things.
I start with this.
Montrow.
It's on the thirty-first one on the, on the, on the.
So the.
Eight, eight forty-five meeting.
The property tax increase, let's say in theory, our pipe rings come through here. We're down to four hundred and seventy-eight thousand and a property tax increase, which is four point eight percent.
Wow. Is that, is that being realistic on the cuts or just?
That's what, I mean, we, that's quite a bit of fluff. Yeah, we, I mean, that was quite a bit of, yeah.
I'd just say fluff, but he still gives us.
It's not taking it down to the wire on anything.
I wouldn't think so. Compared to what they spent in the last three years, it's not.
And that's why you didn't come in and like, okay, I have this and there, there's a hundred thousand, like, if, for example, if it's Brandy, I have hundred thousand dollars in election equipment or something.
Do they have to?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion that we can, we can adjourn?
Maybe we can adjourn.
Second.
All of you say hi?
Hi.
Who's saying names? We are adjourned.